That the Holy Spirit is indeed, as you all know already, the third person in the Godhead. There are some people who do not believe in the Trinity, but we believe in the Holy Trinity, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. And all three, they are what we call co-equal. They are co-eternal and con-substantial. Co-equal, co-eternal, con-substantial of the same substance. They are all one. We don't believe in three Gods, but we believe in three persons in one God. And another thing I want to remind us of, that we know it already, is that the Holy Spirit is not a thing. He is not an it. The Holy Spirit is a person. Jesus said he will send another, just like me, a person. And the Bible tells us, or teaches us, that the Holy Spirit speaks, he moves. He is not an inanimate object. He is the third person of the Godhead. And the final thing I want to say about him is that he has the same attributes. They all have the same attributes. You read Scripture, you will see that they all possess the same attributes. And that is the blessed Holy Ghost too. And we live in a time when people, a lot of people, do not believe in the person of the Holy Ghost. A lot of people do not believe in the person of the Holy Ghost. And you know, for example, that the Jehovah's Witnesses do not believe in the person of the Holy Ghost. The Jehovah's Witnesses believe that the Holy Ghost is a thing. It's an it. Likewise, the Mormons and some other groups, well, we believe that the Holy Spirit is a person. And I want to begin by looking at what I call the coming of the Holy Ghost. I want to compare, when Jesus came, certain events took place. But the fact is that if you are not careful, we will miss the fact that when the Holy Ghost came, some similar things took place. But normally, we don't spend, we don't spend much time on those things. And so, as you begin to look at the Holy Ghost and his gifts, I want to talk briefly about the coming of the Holy Ghost. And I want to say three or four things about that in comparing his coming with the coming of Christ. Those of you who study the Old Testament would realize that the coming of Christ was prophesied from, in Old Testament times. The prophets saw the coming of the Messiah. They prophesied where he was to be born. They prophesied a lot of things about him. But it is the same thing with the Holy Spirit. The coming of the Holy Spirit was prophesied, right? In the Old Testament. I'm going to ask you to work with me, see? I want somebody to find Joel 2 and verse 28 for me. Joel 2 and verse 28, read that for me. Joel 2, 28. Keep your Bibles open. This is Bible study, right? Am I being heard? Am I being heard? Okay, can you read for me? Joel 2, 28, somebody read it for me, please.
Hello?
Are you reading?
Yes, I will read.
Go ahead, please, just go ahead and read.
Joel 2, 28.
Yes?
And it came to pass afterwards that I will pour out my spirit upon all flesh and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy. Your old men shall dream dreams and dreams. Your young men shall see visions.
All right. So here is an example then of the Holy Spirit, the coming of the Holy Spirit being prophesied by the prophets, just as though the coming of Jesus was indeed prophesied. So that's a similarity that I see with the coming of the Holy Spirit. Another similarity I see, that first of all, as I said, Christ foretold the coming of the Holy Spirit also, just as though John, John foretold the coming of Jesus. John says, "There comes one after me. He shall baptize you to the Holy Ghost on fire." And so, Jesus said that when he leaves, he will send another Comforter. And that word, "another", it means one just like me, same qualities, same person, another Comforter. So just as though John foretold the coming of Jesus, likewise, Jesus foretold the coming of the Holy Ghost. I see that as another similarity. Another thing I see, when Jesus came, there were mighty wonders and signs, the angels sang, right? The star of Bethlehem and all of these happened in Acts chapter two with the coming of the Holy Ghost. We see there's a mighty rushing wind, supernatural events took place at the coming of the Holy Ghost. But you know, you hardly hear about these, right? And if you are not careful, you will overlook all these events that preceded the coming of the Holy Ghost, just as all these number of events preceded the coming of the Lord Jesus, right? And there's another point I see, I want to share with you, is this. Just as how there were questions at the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ, you need to turn your mics off. With the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ, that he was the Messiah, questioning, the Jews questioned it. Could it be, this is not him, couldn't be. Same way, if you're looking at Acts chapter two, what mean as this? They were questioning the baptism, the coming of the Holy Ghost, questioning the coming of the Holy Ghost. And I see these things as similarities with the coming of the Lord Jesus. There's another one, I don't have on the screen. But there was a private and a public declaration when Jesus was born in Bethlehem of Judea. That was a private situation. But later on, it became public. When the Holy Spirit fell, and it is important, it is important that you notice this, notice. When the Holy Spirit came at Pentecost, it was a private situation. It was a private situation. It was afterwards, it was made public. But when the Holy Spirit came, only disciples were there in the room. The 120 followers were there in the room. It was later on, when it was noised abroad, that they came in and Peter said, "This is that which was spoken." So these are similarities I see between the coming of the Holy Spirit and the advent of the Lord. So then, the next thing. Why should we know about spiritual gifts? Why should we know about spiritual gifts? Anybody wants to suggest a particular reason why it is important that we know about spiritual gifts? Anybody? This is Bible study, you must talk. Anybody wants to suggest a particular reason? Let me ask you, why do you think we should know about spiritual gifts? Don't be afraid, talk up the thing. Why do you think the believer should know about spiritual gifts?
I think I should be able to identify, if there are spiritual gifts to be given to the people of God, then I should be able to know what my gift is, to be able to identify my spiritual gift.
Okay, good, that's a good, okay. You need to know about the gift so you can be able to identify. Good. Any other reason why we need to know about the spiritual gifts?
Yes, good night. So the gift is not just for my personal benefit, it's to benefit the body. So if I'm to operate in my gifting, as Sister Barbara said, I must know and I must, it must be activated so I can effectively serve in that area.
Okay, good, thank you. Somebody else?
Okay, so the Scripture proclaims that we, those who worship him, must worship him in spirit and in truth.
Yes, finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, so what are you saying then? You have to know the spiritual gifts are, so you can worship him?
Yes.
Okay, yes, yes, somebody else was saying something.
And worship him to the fullest.
What do you mean by that statement?
Knowing your gift, then you are able to serve him very well, I am thinking.
Okay, to utilize your gift in serving him?
Yes.
All right, good. Now let me suggest, all of you are right to some extent, yes. Let me suggest to you some other reasons perhaps why you need, but why we need to know the Holy Spirit. First Corinthians 12 and verse 1. I'm going to ask you to read, keep your Bibles open. Somebody turn to First Corinthians 12 and verse 1 for me and read. As you find it, read it, don't wait for me to say read. First Corinthians 12 and verse 1.
Now concerning spiritual gifts, brethren, I would not have you ignorant.
Good, good. We should know gifts. Paul says, concerning spirituals. I'm going to come back to that verse later on. Concerning spirituals, I don't want you to be ignorant. Every child of God should know about the gifts, what the gifts are, and know your gift, and know how to operate in your gift. All right, good. So the first thing Paul makes, immediate burden declare, you should know the gifts so that you are, in fact, he doesn't want you to be ignorant, right? Ignorant brethren. And the fact is that in today's church, many persons are ignorant as far as the gifts are concerned. Ignorance reigns. And I want to be careful of that. The second passage, First Timothy 4 and verse 14. Somebody read that for me. First Timothy 4 and verse 14.
Do not neglect your gift, which was given you to prophesy when the body of elders laid their hands on you.
Okay, stir up the gift. What version did you just read from?
Anabite.
Right. I'm sorry, King James says stir up the gifts, right? Don't neglect the gift, right? And if you are going to stir up the gift, if you are going to use the gift, then you must indeed know what these gifts are. We should use the spiritual gifts. Start, Paul says to young Timothy, because the church needs the gifts. And the third reason I have here is found in First Peter 4, verse 10. Yes? First Peter 4 and verse 10. What does that say?
Every man hath received the gift. Evil soul ministers the same one to another as good stewards of the manifold grace of God.
All right. Peter is telling us, Peter is telling us that we are responsible for the gifts that God has given to us, right? Every man, he must minister, use the gifts. We must minister the gifts, we are responsible to use the gifts. You did not get a gift to be used as, what do I call it? To be put up and, don't you, but just say you have the gift. No, whatever gift you have been given, you are expected to utilize that gift. You are responsible for that gift. And let me say at the very outset here, and we might come back to it as we go along, that every child of God has a gift. Every child of God has been given a gift. And by the grace of God, as we continue this study this month, my prayer is that you will be able to identify, if you have not yet done so, because God, God is not going to hide your gift. He wants you to be able to activate the gifts, to activate the gifts that he has given to you. So these are just some of the reasons we need to know about spiritual gifts. God does not want us to be ignorant brethren. There's something else I want to share with you. There's a group of people that are known as cessationists, cessationists and continuationists. Now, we as Open Bible, we hold to the view of continuationists. We hold to the view of continuationists. We believe that the gifts are for today. We believe that the gifts are active today. The church at Corinth was a tremendous church, right? A tremendous church. It was one of those churches that gave Paul, in fact, it was the church that gave Paul the most problems, right? But Paul, in chapter 1 and I think verse 7, says, "You come behind in no gift." You come behind in no gift, First Corinthians 1, verse 7. In other words, this church was a church in which all the gifts were manifested. All the gifts were manifested. And we believe, as Open Bible, that the gifts are still being manifested in the church today. Perhaps not at the level that it ought, that they ought to be. But we still believe that the gifts are for the church today. However, the cessationists, the cessationists are those people who do not believe that spiritual gifts are for today. They do not believe that spiritual gifts are for today. And one of the passages that they use, First Corinthians chapter 13, when it says, "Tongue shall cease, prophecy shall cease," right? But the grace of these is charity. So they use that verse to support their cessationist view. What do they believe? They believe, for example, that spiritual gifts such, that's supposed to be you, such as speaking in tongues, prophecy and healing have ceased, ceased. The word cessation comes from something that is ceased, done with. So they do not believe that the gifts are in operation, right? There are some churches that don't believe that. One of these groups, you know, the Adventists. The Adventists do not believe that the gifts are in operation for today. And there are many other churches that don't believe that the gifts are in operation. Other churches, they accept some of the gifts, but they don't accept others, right? They don't accept others. And one of the gifts, I'm going to spend some time one evening on, is the gifts of tongues and interpretation. Because if there's any gift that has created a problem in Christendom, is a gift of tongues and interpretation, right? Well, hopefully by God's help, we can look at that for one lesson. I'm going to ask some questions and try to answer them in one lesson. So the cessationists argue that spiritual gifts are no longer in operation. And why do they say this? They say this because they hold the view that these gifts were for the apostolic era. You know, what is the apostolic era? The apostolic era was from the coming of the Holy Spirit to the establishing of the church, Pauline times. The apostolic era, when the apostles were alive and they were in charge of the churches. So they say, these gifts, they argue, were given to establish the church. And now that the churches, sorry, now that the church has been established, there is no longer a need for these gifts. The church is now okay. So we need to study to know about the gifts so that we can answer these cessationists. We can answer them and show them that if the early church, right, needed the gifts, we sure do need them now. So that is why, one of the reasons, the main reasons, I believe, that we need to be aware of spiritual gifts. Any question on that so far? Okay? Question?
No.
Okay. We move now to look at the passages that talk about gifts. The passages, we're going to read them, we have to read them. Does somebody find Romans 12, 6 to 8 for me? Somebody else find First Corinthians 12, 4 to 11? And also First Corinthians 4, I'm sorry, First Corinthians 12, 4 to 11, First Corinthians 12, 27 to 31? And then somebody else find Ephesians 4, 11 to 12? And we want to read all of these passages before we discuss, okay? So somebody read Romans 12, 6 to 8 loud and clear.
We have, we have different gifts.
Yeah, read louder, please. Can you read any louder, if you can, Mike?
Let me try. Any better?
Yes, go ahead.
So we have different gifts according to the grace given to each of us. If your gift is prophesying, then prophesy in accordance with your faith. If it is serving, then serve. If it is teaching, then teach. If it is to encourage, then give encouragement. If it is giving, then give generosity. If it is to lead, do it diligently. If it is to show mercy, do it cheerfully. Romans 12, 6 to 8.
Thank you very much. So Paul is writing, and it is amazing. Let me tell you something about Romans 12. Let me tell you about Romans 12. If you, those who are used to the Romans would have realized that up to chapter 11 of the book of Romans, Paul is dealing with the matter of salvation from chapter 1 to chapter, from chapter 1 and verse 18 to chapter 11. Well, really to chapter 8. But chapter 9, 10, 11, Paul is dealing with the Jews and salvation. So we say, he is dealing with salvation up to chapter 11. The theologians call that section the indicatives of the gospel. From chapter 1 to chapter 11, the theologians have a word for it. The indicatives of the gospel. In other words, that section tells us what we ought to know about the gospel, the indicatives. And then from chapter 12 to the end, chapter 16, he is now telling us what the theologians call the imperatives of the gospel. So chapter 1 to 11, the indicatives of the gospel. Chapters 12 to chapter 16, the imperatives. The indicatives, what we should do, I'm sorry, what we should know, the imperatives are what we should do, do the things that we should do now that we are saved. So he begins chapter 12 with the words, therefore, the word, therefore, I beseech, I'm sorry, I beseech you therefore. I beseech, I'm sorry, I beseech you therefore, I beseech you therefore, what you should now do. And he's telling us how we ought to live our lives, how we must, our, our salvation must be worked out in our lives, in our homes, in the church. So six to eight is telling us that we must operate the gifts in humility and love. But what, what, what sister just read is how we ought to operate now that we have been saved, operate in the gifts. I'm going to come to that word gift, that's a very important word. I must explain it to you, but let's move on to first Corinthians twelve, four to eleven.
Hello, Irene Doc.
Yeah, you, 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 you'd have to say hello here, just read.
Okay, first Corinthians twelve, verses four to eleven.
Yes.
Now there are diversities of gift, but the same spirits. And there are differences of administration, but the same Lord. There are adversity of operation, but it is the same God which work it all in all. But the manifestation of the spirit is given to every man to profit with all.
Hmm.
Four to one is given by the spirit, the word of wisdom. To another, the word of knowledge by the same spirit. Another faith, another faith by the same spirit to another gift. To another, the gifts of healing by the same spirit. To another, the working of miracles, to another prophecy, to another discerning of spirit, to another diverse kind of tongues, to another, the interpretation of tongues. Last, but all those work that know, that one and the self saves for divided to every man severally, as you will.
Good, good. So Paul is telling the church now in Corinth, right? That the spirit, okay, could you go down to twenty-seven and finish it for me, please? Go to twenty-seven and finish it.
Okay. Um, verses twenty-seven to thirty-one.
Yes.
Now he are the body of Christ and the members in particular. And God had set some in the church, first apostles, second, secondarily prophet, third the teachers. After that miracle, then gifts of healing helps govern diversity of tongues. Are all, are all prophets, apostles, are all prophets, are all teachers, are all the workers of miracles. Of all the gift of healing, do all speak with songs, do all interpret, but covet earnestly, the best, covet earnestly the best gift, yes, sho, sho, sho. I unto you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
A more excellent way.
Good, all right, same thing. So Paul is telling them in chapter twelve, outlining the gifts. And if you read chapter fourteen of that same book, you're going to find that there were some who wanted special gifts. There are some who wanted some gift that would show, that they show them up, um, um, upfront gifts, right? And Paul actually say, th, th, they were coveting or coveting the best gift, or what they considered to be the best gifts. I hope I can look at that verse with you as we go along. The best gift, there are no best gifts, there are no best gifts. Because if all the gifts are given by the spirit, there are no best gifts. And God gives the gifts as they will. So there, there is no, nothing called best gifts, but we'll come to that at another time. So Paul is outlining to the church at Corinth, who were quarreling about the gifts and wanted upfront gifts. Paul was explaining to them the position of gifts. Read the last passage, the passage, um, Ephesians four, from verse eleven to twelve.
Ephesians four, eleven to twelve. And he gave some apostles and some.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask it to begin up, begin at verse nine for me. I want to get the context.
Now that he ascended, what it, what it is, but that he also descended.
And that he is whom, that he is whom?
Christ.
Oh, good, right, go ahead.
Descended first into the lower heights of the earth. He that descended is the same also that ascended up far above all heaven, that he might feel all things. And he gave some apostles and some prophets and say, and some evangelists and some pastors and teachers.
All right.
For the perfect.
Go ahead.
For the perfect thing of the same.
Hmm.
For the work of the ministry, for the edifying of the body of Christ.
Come back to that passage later on, we have to come back to that passage, good. So when you talk about the gifts in the church, the passages that outline these gifts are the one, the ones on your screen. These are the passages. Whenever you talk about the gifts in the church, they are outlined in Romans twelve, first Corinthians twelve and Ephesians four. But I'm going to show you something tonight, I hope I can get there. Show you something tonight, that there is a slight difference with the Ephesian passage. There's a slight difference with the Ephesian passage. We're going to come to that because I'm going to say to you later on that the passage in Ephesians is not about charismatic gifts. The passage is about gifts, but it is not about charismatic gifts. Romans twelve, first Corinthians twelve, they are about charismatic gifts. But Ephesians, chapter four, I'm going to show you tonight. They, because people tend to use this passage as one of the passages that talk about charismatic gift. That passage Ephesians does not speak about charismatic gifts. I'm going to show you later on, but I'm going to come to that. Let's move on, because I want to finish this where we are tonight. Good, we're going to come there. Now, when the Bible talks about spiritual gifts, right? It uses two words. I want to pay attention to this study tonight, two words. Pneumatica, pneumatica, that which comes from the spirit and charismata, that results from God's grace. Right? Two words, when they talk about spiritual gifts in Romans, chapter twelve and verse one, right? Somebody has a King James Bible with you? This is Bible studying, remember? Go back to first Corinthians twelve and verse one. Somebody find that, somebody find that? Are you there?
Where did new King James do, sir?
No, I'm the old one, no, you know, okay, let, let me hear what the new one says.
Now come, now come, spiritual gifts, brethren. I would not.
All right, hold, hold here. The words I want to focus on is now concerning spiritual gifts. Now, look at the words, spiritual gifts, and tell me what, is there something noticeably there, noticeably there?
Um, gifts written in italics.
Very good, very good. Italics, that means the word gift is not found in the original manuscript or manuscripts. Somebody wrote in that to make it plainer or more plain for readers. What Paul had there was simply pneumaticos. Now concerning spiritual, pneumaticos, spiritual gifts, right? So the word there for gifts, spiritual gifts, is really pneumaticos. And then Romans, the book of Romans, he talks about as you, the gifts are given by grace, grace. The word charis, charismata, charismata. That's the word for Charis. It comes from Charis, which is the grace, grace. So then spiritual gifts then are, uh, are, are spirituals given by the grace of God. You combine them and you get the word charismata, charismata, charismata. That is why the churches are called charismatic. You know why we are called charismatic? Can anybody give me a reason? Or the reason why we are called charis, um, charismatics? Anybody want to suggest a reason why we are, based on the definition I'm giving to you, why we are called charismatics? The chari, have you ever heard about the charismatic movement?
Yes, yes.
What you, what you know about them, sister? Sister Campbell?
Men, men are sure, but I think that's probably because we operate in the spirit.
Well, I should, I should know where every church operates in the spirit.
I think so.
You're not wrong, you know, you're not wrong, but you're half, you're half right.
Half right.
Anybody else, why are we called charismatic movement? Why was it movement, it's called a charismatic movement? Anybody? Anybody?
Um, is it because, is it because it forms an important part of the Christian faith?
Christian faith, could you?
Or, or the Christian movement.
Expand on that a little bit more for me.
Um, uh, let me see now. Um, the, the, that important place that the charismatic would be highlighting is that strong belief and faith in Jesus Christ.
Okay, not really, not really, let me tell you, time, time, time is going. They are called charismatic, you see? Because they believe in the operation of the gifts of the spirit, the charismata. They believe in the operation of the gifts of the spirit. The gifts of the spirit, right? And let me tell you, let me give you a, a brief history of the charismatic movement. The charismatic movement started at the end of the nineteenth century with what became known historically as the Azusa Street Revival. I don't know if you've ever heard of that. The Azusa Street Revival, where the speaking in tongues was dominant. Speaking in tongues was the main thing about the earliest, the, the initial days of the charismatic movement. Operating, not the gifts, the speaking in tongues. That was how the charismatic movement started.
Oh.
Late, late eighteen hundreds. Going, we're going over into the nineteenth, um, sorry, began in the nineteenth century, sorry, going over into the twentieth century, right? Now, that's a first stage. And that went up to about nineteen sixty. After nineteen sixty, you had the second move, the second wave. They call it the first wave. The second wave, nineteen sixty, about the nineteen eighties. What was the characteristic of, of, of the second wave? The characteristic was all the gifts were now in operation, healing, prophecy and all of these were, and i, i, it is in the nineteen sixties that you have the emergence of what became known really as the charismatic movement. Anybody in Jamaica, remember people like Peter Morgan, brother Edwards, you remember that guy? Right? These are persons in the charismatic movement. And then in the later years of the nineteen eighty, you had a third wave. And the third wave was characterized by tele evangelists. Television evangelists, speaking in tongues and television and radio, right? Men like Oral Roberts. So that is what the charismatic movement. Let me remind you again, what, why, why they are called charismatic. They are called charismatic because they believe in the operation of the gifts in the church. They believe in the operation of the gifts in the church, all the gifts. Did you know that there was a period between the nineteen seventies and eighties when people leave their churches and go up to Pegasus? Because the charismatic movement was there and later on.
Um, we're called Sheraton, Windham.
I mean, not Pegasus, Sheraton, you're right, right? The Sheraton, and then you have added to that, now you have the Catholics becoming a member, part of the charismatic movement, characterized by the gifts in operation. So then, so the words that we, that we use to identify these gifts is the word charismata, charismata. I'm going to come back to that. Now, there are two words. I want to follow this now, follow me now. If you're, if you're going to sleep, wake up, wake up, wake up, there's a minute, you can't miss this. There are two words in the Bible that are translated gifts. Two words in the Bible, translated gifts. The first one is Doron, Doron. Open your Bible for me, I'm going to find these passages for me, please. Three passages I want you to find for me. Find Matthew two, seven. Somebody is fine, Acts two, thirty-eight, and somebody is fine Ephesians four and verse six. Acts two, eleven, I'm sorry, Matthew two, eleven, Acts two, thirty-eight and Ephesians four and verse six. I hope you have found them, good, read the first one for me, somebody.
Matthew two, eleven.
Yes.
Two, eleven.
Oh, okay. What's happening there?
And when they, and when they were coming into the house.
Somebody else started, um.
Oh, go, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go, go ahead, go ahead, who's reading, go ahead.
And when they had come into the house, they saw the young child with Mary, Mary, his mother, and fell down and worshiped him. And they had opened their treasures, they presented to him gifts, gold, frankincense and myrrh.
All right, pause there, thank you, sister. Now, they presented to him gifts. That word, that word is a Greek word, Doron. Doron. I'm going to show the difference in a short way. That is the word Doron. They presented to him gifts. Read the next one, Acts two, thirty-eight.
Acts two, verse thirty-eight. Then Peter said unto them, repent and be baptized, every one of you in the name of Jesus Christ, for the remission of sins. And he, and he shall receive the gift of the Holy Ghost.
All right. You shall receive the gift of the Holy Ghost, pay attention now. That word is Doron, Doron. Read the second, the last one for me, Ephesians four, verse six.
Six, verse eight.
Six, what is, what is eight say? Read six, let me see the six.
But every one of us is given by the grace of God. Sorry. But every one of us is given grace according to the measure of the gift of Christ.
So, i- i- is that chapter six? Chapter four?
Chapter four, yes.
Ephesians four, huh?
Seven.
Read verse six to me.
One God and one Father of all, who is above all and through all and in all.
Mm-hmm. Go, go, go down some more.
But every one of us is given grace according to the measure of the gift of Christ.
Continue reading and, and I tell you when to stop, go ahead, go ahead.
Wherefore he says, when he ascended up on high, he led captives captive and gave gifts to men.
All right, that's the one I want, what verse is that?
Verse eight.
Verse eight, I'm sorry, yeah, verse eight. He gave gifts to men. He gave gifts to men. That word is also Doran. Ephesians four, verse six, eight, uh, my six to eight, right? Is also Doran. Bear that in mind. That's very important. It is not Charisma. Let me go through the second word, and before I comment on that. The second word is Charisma. Charisma is the word that was used by Paul in Romans twelve, First Corinthians twelve, and by Peter later on. That word is the word that is used for spiritual gifts. That we are studying in Romans twelve, First Corinthians twelve. That, that's the word. And let me say, you see, I have something there in parentheses. This word is not found in the Gospel, Gospels, and it's not found in the book of Acts. You'll never find that word in the Gospels. And you'll never find that word in the book of Acts. Charisma is only used when the writer is referring to spiritual gifts. Let me say it again. That word Charisma is not found in the Gospels. Is not found in the book of Acts. It is only used when the writer, whoever the writer is, and it is usually the apostle Paul, is talking about spiritual gifts that we are focusing on this month. Somebody find these passages for me, please. Find the passages. Okay, sorry, let me go back. Those three passages. One person find one, so we don't have to wait too long, just find one. Somebody is read that one, you find the other one while the person is reading, so we don't have to wait too long, okay? So, I'm gonna read those passages. Romans twelve and verse six, what it says?
Having then different differing according to the grace that is given to us.
All right, Charis, okay. Having therefore gifts, pneumaticus. Different according to the grace, the Charis. So we get Charisma. That word is Charisma. Romans twelve and verse six. It is dealing with the gifts. Charisma. Not Doran. I soon show the difference. First Timothy one, verse six.
All right?
If you find it, read it.
From which some having swerved have turned aside on things.
I do, I do. First Timothy one, six.
Yeah.
Go up some more then for me, I'm, 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 I get my verse, misread it.
Let me the.
Look at, look, look, look at second Timothy one, six.
No, I don't think, that's it, I think.
What it says?
Second, oh, sorry, did you say second Timothy one, six?
Look at that, yes.
Okay. Wherefore I put thee in remembrance that thou.
It is second Timothy, please, the computer made a mistake, not me. Second Timothy one, six, go ahead.
Wherefore I put thee in remembrance that thou stir up the gift of God, which is in thee.
Okay, good.
By taking off my hands.
Okay, so that word gift is Charisma. That you stir up the gift. Charisma. Charisma. Right? Read the third one, first Peter four, ten.
As every man hath received a gift, even so ministerly.
You, you can pause there. Gift. All of these words are translated, each one of them is translated Charisma. Sorry, it's Charisma, then translated gift, Charisma. And, and, um, these, these, now let me tell you the difference. Doran is a normal gift. If I give you a birthday gift, it's a Doran. If you give me a gift, it's a Doran. That's the idea of Doran, normal gift. Right? If you give the pastor a gift, it's not a Charisma, it's a Doran. So they gave Jesus a gift. Not a Charisma, it's a Doran. In Acts two thirty-eight, repent and be baptized, and ye shall receive the gift, the Doran, of the Holy Spirit. Holy Spirit is a gift. And then Ephesians four, verse six, which is a challenging one. Because this is a passage that we use to talk about spiritual gift too. But as I said to you at the very beginning, Ephesians chapter six, and the offices in Ephesians chapter six, they are not the same as Charisma. They are Doran, and if you look at Ephesians chapter six carefully, if you look at Ephesians chapter six carefully, I'm going to let you look at it. All of you, open your Bible to Ephesians chapter six. Open your Bible to Ephesians chapter six, I'm gonna ask you a question. Open your Bible at Ephesians chapter six. Here's a question. Who is it that is giving those gift in Ephesians chapter six?
First, it's four, I think you want, sir, Ephesians chapter four, Ephesians chapter six.
I'm sorry, did I say six?
Yes.
Ephesians four and verse, yeah, Ephesians four and verse six, I think it is. But read, 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 read from verse five or verse, yeah, read, read. We, we, I'm sorry, we, we, we come verse six down. And tell me, who is the person giving the gifts?
Everyone.
Who's the person giving, giving the gifts?
The Lord.
The Lord who?
The Lord, uh, one, is one God and one Father of all.
Yes, and who is giving the gift based on the text?
Jesus.
Yes. It is Jesus who is giving the gift. He give, he gave gifts unto men, he who, Jesus. He descended, he ascended, he descended, and he, Jesus, this is not the Spirit giving the gifts. It is not the Spirit giving the gifts. It is Jesus in Ephesians chapter four, giving gifts to the men.
Yes.
Charisma are gifts given by the Spirit, the Holy Spirit. In this case, and that is why, that is why you do not have the word Charisma. That is why in Ephesians chapter four, from verse six down, you do not have the word Charisma. Because Charisma, we're gonna come with a definition. But Charisma is a gift given by the Spirit.
Okay.
In Ephesians chapter four, it is not the Spirit that is giving the gift. It is Jesus. And that means that, in my understanding, in my interpretation, it is this. These gifts, Doran, create the five-fold ministry of the church. Not the individual believers. Jesus has set the church with five-fold ministries. You will notice with me that when you look at First Corinthians chapter twelve, and Ephesians chapter tw- I'm sorry, Romans chapter twelve, you do not find pastors. You do not find pastors, you find teachers, yes? But I'll explain that when we go along. But you don't find pastors, neither do you find apostles. So what Jesus did, my interpretation, and I read a book by a man called Fushke, and he calls it, um, introducing the Holy Spirit. He, 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 he's, he's my supporting literature. He, the point is, that's a five-fold ministry of the church. These five-fold ministries in Ephesians are not the same as spiritual gifts in Corinthians and Romans. He, Jesus, the Spirit, set them in the church. I'm gonna stop there tonight, I don't, you can't take no more of this. I'm gonna stop there tonight, any questions? Any questions? Please, please ask your questions, please.
Are you hearing me, sir?
No, I'm not hearing you, sir, go again, I, I'm hearing you now, go ahead.
Right, I'm asking if all gifts that are given by Jesus Christ are Dorans, meaning they are normal gifts?
Right, exactly. Because Charisma has a special meaning to the Holy Spirit. Those gifts, that's why they are called Charisma, pneumaticus. Given by the Spirit, in a sense you might say, but isn't Jesus, yes? But the, the, the context is that.
Understand.
Right, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I understand.
Any other question?
Yes, good night, Rev.
Good night, mom.
How are you?
I'm very fine, I hope you are too.
I'm well, um, I was a little bit confused earlier when you, um, you gave an example with, uh, the gift of the Holy Spirit. Being Doran earlier, but now I am understanding gift of the Holy Spirit. So is there a difference being?
Right.
The gift of the Holy Spirit as Doran, as like a noun? And, uh, something different now with Charisma as different gifts from the Spirit?
It's a good question. A number, I, I, I anticipated a question like that. A number of people, when they say the gift of the Holy Spirit, they confuse it with the baptism of the Holy Spirit. It is not. Notice, Paul didn't say he was gonna receive the gift of tongues. That's a different matter, we'll come to that. He said the gift of the Holy Spirit. Repent and be baptized, and you shall receive the gift, the Doran, of the Holy Spirit. In other words, Romans tells us, Romans, um, chapter eight tells us, if you have not the Spirit, you are none of His. You cannot be a Christian without the Holy Spirit. Am I making myself clear?
Yes.
Yes, you cannot be a Christian without the Holy Spirit. Once you become a Christian, you have the Holy Spirit in you, that's a gift God gives to you. Right? That's not the baptism of the Holy Spirit. That's not speaking in tongues. Are you following me?
Yes, sir.
In John twenty, verse twenty-one, I think it is, the, John says, he breathed on them and say, receive ye the Holy Spirit. That is not the baptism of the Holy Spirit. Because he said to the same disciples, later on, tarry in Jerusalem, and you shall receive the baptism of the Holy Spirit. So when John twenty, twenty-one said he breathed on them and say, receive ye the Holy Spirit, that was not the baptism of the Holy Spirit. That was bringing them into the, the interpretation, bringing them into Christian experience. Because if the Holy Spirit was not yet given, in that sense. So, the point I'm making is, the gift of the Holy Spirit is the Doran. So once every child of God, everybody who accepts Jesus as Lord, must have the Holy Spirit. Romans eight, if you have not the Spirit, you are none of His. It did not say if you're not baptized in the Spirit, that if you don't have the Holy Spirit, because it is the Holy Spirit in dwells you, when you become a Christian. So that is why Peter said, you shall receive the Doran. You have to receive the Doran before you can receive the Charisma. Any other question?
So, so Reverend, come on.
Yes.
Um. He breathed on them and said that they should receive the Holy Spirit.
I can't hear you.
Hello, Deborah.
Okay, um, you said that the scripture which says he breathed on them and said that they should receive the Holy Spirit. Weren't those people already Christians then, would they not have already the Spirit since when you accept Jesus, you, you, you get the Spirit?
All right, no, no. Christianity wasn't around at that time, Sister Barbara. Is that Sister Bob's?
Yes, sure.
Christianity wasn't around then, it was a Christianity, the disciples were first called Christian at a place in Antioch. Right? But the fact is that they were followers of Christ.
Okay.
Right? Now remember, Jesus is going away now, right? So it, in a sense, is initiating the whole Christianity movement, you understand? That came into fruition, as it were, on the, on the day of Pentecost.
Yeah.
When the Holy Ghost came. Did you see what I'm saying?
Clear, as much.
Well, I'm glad it is clear. All right, yes, so, but when he breathed on them, it could not have been the baptism of the Holy Spirit. Because he, he would not have said to them later on, tarry in Acts one, verse eight, what ye shall receive power after that Holy Ghost come on you. So it's a different situation. All right? Any other question, or should we adjourn the meeting here?
Oh, good night.
Oh, good night.
Yes, I'm, I'm still a little hazy, I'm hoping that as we go along.
What is it, what is it, what is the source of your haziness?
Yes, um, so, so, so we know about the Trinity, yes? And, um, yet you're making a distinction here now between what was given by, by Jesus and what was given by the Holy Spirit, and I thought it was, um, a godhead which was operating in unity, so I'm, I'm a little unclear now.
They operate in unity, but.
You're not making a distinction now between what was given by, by Jesus and what was given by the, the Holy Spirit.
But you remember, you remember John in Matthew, in Matthew chapter four, when Jesus was baptized? There was a distinction, you remember? You remember? The Spirit came down as a dove, and there was a word from God who says, this is my beloved Son, in whom I am well pleased. There was a distinction there, right? And in other places, in other words, they are, they are, they are different dispensations. In the Old Testament, you get, you get the dispensation of the Father. You don't hear much about the Son in the Old Testament, right?
Correct.
Is that, is that like a deep thing you're going to, you know, but let me, let me try ahead. You, the Father in the Old Testament. In the New Testament, the Son, that's that, the, the dispensation. You follow?
Yes, sir.
And in the church age, dispensation of the Spirit. So there is, there's not really a distinction, they still operate as one, but they are different dispensations. Different dispensa, it, it, it's, it's challenging, it's not easy to understand. But, I'm not going to go there tonight, maybe, maybe brother Edward in Denver to talk about the Trinity. But it is not a matter of saying, that Jesus himself? But it is not a matter of saying, the, Jesus himself said, Jesus himself said, um, John twelve, John fourteen, um, let not your heart be troubled. And then he says, I go, but I will send another comforter, he said that, you remember? So Jesus himself, God himself, as it were, what we, in our understanding, this is one of the mysteries of Christianity. And in all my years of teaching, nobody has ever been able to fully comprehend or explain the mystery of the Trinity. But the point I'm making is that even Jesus, God, and they made distinctions. Jesus said one time, um, um, my Father works, neither do I work, right? I and my Father, he said, are one. So scripture has a number of examples of distinction, distinction being drawn between the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
I'm, I'm asking this Reverend Hamon for a friend.
Yeah.
The question is, does everyone get the charismata of the Holy Spirit?
All right, no, 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 and, okay, but let's have a minute, let, let me say this, brother, brother Edwards. The question is wrong. Because there is no, there's nothing, there's nothing called a charismata of the Holy Spirit. Right, it is the gift of tongues, which is the baptism of the Holy Spirit. Right, the gift of tongues is the charismata. Right, the baptism of the Holy Spirit, the Bible said, um, wh- when the disciples were baptized with the Holy Spirit, they got, they got tongues, and tongues is just a sign that you are baptized with the Holy Spirit. Tongues is not a gift by itself. I'm going to deal with that, brother, brother Edwards, but tongues is not a gift by itself. Tongues come, sorry, tongues come with the baptism of the Holy Spirit. I'm going to explain that later on, all of us in church can be baptized with the Holy Spirit. Every one of us can be baptized with the Holy Spirit and speak in tongues. But speaking in tongues does not mean you are baptized with the Holy, sorry, I'm sorry, the gift of tongues does not mean you are baptized with the Holy Spirit. All of us can be baptized with the Holy Spirit, sorry, I said it wrong, brother Edwards, all of us can be baptized with the Holy Spirit, right? But talking in tongues doesn't mean you have the gift of tongues. Right, so all of us can have the baptism, speak in tongues, but all of us will not have the gift of tongues. As, God help us as we go through, that you will, it will become clearer by the grace of God.
I have, I have a, a suspicion that the question really was intending to ask. Does everybody, no, does everybody have a, a gift of the?
Yes, the Bible says that.
Right.
The Bible says that, everybody has a gift.
I, I, I want to cover all the possible bases, so.
Yes. Everybody has a gift, because once you become, once you come into the body of Christ, there's a role for you to play.
Okay.
Remember, the gift now is for the body of Christ. The gift, Ephesians six one is for leadership.
Right.
In the church, but the gift, the charismata, is for the body of Christ, but we're going to come to that next week, God's willing.
Questions, Reverend Hamon? I think earlier you had said that there is no higher gift.
Yeah, no best gift.
No best gift, so how would you explain in first Corinthians twelve? Speaks about the apostles, and that would have been the charismata gifts, right? Because it's saying what the difference, those were given by the Spirit.
Right.
But in verse thirty-one, it says we are to earnestly desire the higher gifts.
All right, so was I telling that it is a wrong writing? The, it, it, it is not right, what Paul was saying, King James has it wrong, is not a question. It's a question, really, it's a question, um, I think there's a translation by the name of, um, Dowie, Dowie, I think it is, who has a German translator. He says, what Paul is saying, so, li- listen to the context, so you are earnestly coveting what you think are the best gifts, but I'm going to show you a better way. The proper translation of that verse, it would be, so you are earnestly coveting what you think are the best gifts, because the context doesn't support best gifts. The Bible says in very context, God gives gifts according to how he wills.
Yep.
You don't choose your gift. Somebody said to me one day, brother, I'm, you know, I'm praying for the Lord to give me the gift of prophecy, I say, you have no, you have no, you have no part in this matter, it is God who gives you the gift. But they were coveting, but, right, what they thought were the best gifts. But, and then Paul says, I'm going to show you a better way. And he goes into chapter thirteen. That's why he says, that's why he says, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the better way is what?
Oh, chapter thirteen, he said, you are coveting what you think are the best gifts, well, let me show you a better way. Though I speak with the tongues of men and of angels, and have not, you understand? And he goes on and talks about love.
Okay, got you.
I hope you did, I'm glad you did, all right, all right, thank you.
Final question, sir.
Listen, one, if you're not on tonight, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I just want, I just want to clear up in my mind, can it take a little longer if you learn than other people?
Yeah, me too.
John twenty verse twenty-two say, and he breathed.
Breath twenty-two, breathed on them.
On them. When I go to, when I go to the book of Acts, it says, it says, suddenly a sound like the blowing of a violent wind came from heaven and filled the whole room, the whole house, where they were sitting.
Yes.
And they saw what seemed to be the tongue of fire separated and came and rest upon them, and all of them were filled.
Right.
Are they two different things we are talking, one is on and one is in?
Two different things.
Yes, sir, I understand, but blow on them, and the Holy Spirit filling them.
Filling, yeah, in, one is, well, no, when Jesus blown them, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't the baptism he's talking about. It was actually, remember, it's Jesus we're talking about now, he, he actually, in, he, he, he made them, he gave them the Holy Spirit, but that's not the baptism.
So they were not feel that, they were not feel that?
They were not filled with, as we understand, the feeling to mean.
Okay, okay.
People might put, some people do this way, they became, as Sister Baba was saying, Christians.
Okay, okay.
For want of a better term, you understand? Because you see, the reason why I argue that, and I support that, is this, he, if that were the baptism of the Holy Spirit, he would not have said later on, tarry in Jerusalem to receive, because they would have already received it.
Yeah, and, and him can, him, the, the Holy Spirit can come till him go back to him father.
Exact point, exact point, exact point, brother Edwards. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And we will, God's willing, continue next week. Yes, sir.
And, and thank you all for the questions presented. He is not afraid to answer any question that you will have.
Who tell you that?
And where, where he can't answer, he will tell you, I will go and research and come back. All right, but thank you very much, and, and Reverend, don't be afraid to ask the questions. Um, if, 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 if you can't ask it, then we won't learn.
Exactly.
All right, so, don't, don't, don't be afraid. Um, we, we want to thank everybody for the participation. Um, and, and again, stay tuned as to how we will meet, whether virtually or in person. Above everything else, bear in mind that the, the aim of God for you, for me, is that we might altogether be witnesses for him building up the church, building the kingdom of God. That by being equipped with all of what God has available, what he has made available for us, as his people. We, we, we don't want to hide as part of a crowd. We, we, we want to fulfill his purposes, and, and that is the intent uh, behind the sessions, that, that we might earnestly desire to become all of what God has in mind for us in this day and age. Let us pray. Father, we want to thank you tonight again for this privilege we have of coming to you, to be taught by you, to be built up in this most holy faith. We thank you, great God, that your gift, your Holy Spirit, is still available to be our teacher, to guide us into all truth, so that we might become what you intend for us to be. Lord, we bless you, we thank you for Reverend Hamon being available to us. We ask, oh God, that you would continue to use him, and as you use him, prepare all hearts, Lord, to receive your truth, so that indeed, your name will be glorified and your church advanced. Here, our prayer we ask you, in Jesus' name.
Amen.